Against to the flag. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God in the business with liberty and justice for all.
The roll call show that all members are present except for Chad, Chad Young's running just a little bit late, he'll be here shortly. There are no citizen comments tonight. Board member committee reports, we'll start with Debbie.
I had a few things going on, um, we had agenda planning, um, then I did attend one of the referendum communications. Meetings, um, on Friday, I sat in on the MSBA copying conversation. And that's it.
Thank you, Eric, nothing. Um, I think all I had was agenda planning this week. So.
We just finished a policy meeting and I attended the advisory. Committee meeting for tech ed at the high school, um, to with Ben to, um, talk about the bond issue. And then I attended the high school conferences last night and handed out flyers to parents that came to conferences.
Dawn?
I had policy tonight and then I was at the high school conference open house for a little bit last night.
Jim?
At a policy meeting and I subbed in, I subbed in band three days in a row.
How'd that go for you?
We need to do something about that high school. It was really cold in the band. Otherwise, well.
All right, student council report.
Uh, so we just finished up with homecoming, a lot of the staff members were really pleased with how it went. Participation was looking really high this year, so that's awesome. The dance went great, lots of people showed up and had a fun time. Not much, not much aside from that, uh, we're planning on maybe doing some sort of ice cream fundraiser sometime, just little things like that.
All right. And there was a ton of kids at the football game. A lot. Superintendent report.
Well, folks, it's MEA week and this is, uh, I tell this, to me, it's a milestone, given the fact that, you know, in the summer and when you got into August, uh, so much discussion about school and, and pandemic and, um, I'm just so proud and I was thinking that whole time, you know, um, always second guessing myself and decisions that we make, always trying to make the best. Decision, I was thinking that whole time, boy, if we can get it to MEA, that's gonna be a huge milestone for us. And we made it and I think that's huge and, and we've had lots of, um, adversity to work through, but I'm just so proud of our team members. And our students for persevering every day and just having a great, great start of the year, I mean, you just referenced homecoming. I mean, pretty special, pretty special week for the kids and, and not just for the high school kids, it was all grades, uh, all the way, the, all elementary schools and the middle school. And lots of celebration and, uh, we're just seeing lots of things happen and, and just makes me, uh, proud, proud to be part of this great system. I want the board to know that, uh, I have been, you know, daily, almost daily, doing one or two different kinds of presentations. Regarding the referendum, uh, I had, and I know later on in the agenda, there is a special part about a referendum update, but, I'm, I'm bringing this up now because I will likely need to leave a little bit early because I'll be going to Princeton township meeting this evening. To present, uh, and give some information and answer any questions that they have about the bond referendum, so. I'll be trying, I'll be kind of scooting out of here, um, later on this evening, likely before the end of the meeting. You know, you can, you know, we're, we're very transparent with the, the, the number of COVID cases that we have in the district. If anybody can go at any time and look on our dashboard to see the number of cases and you will see that we have some. You know, it, but we've been really. We, we've been hanging in there and our nursing staff has done a great job, we've done some work to get our nursing staff some extra support. With the extra workload and workflow associated with what they do, I would tell you that the role of a school nurse now. Is not even close to what it used to be, you know, 20, 30 years ago, it's, it's a very sophisticated. Uh, position and we're very blessed to have the professionals that we have in our district. To, to help us navigate through, uh, tomorrow, uh, there's a couple of us that are going down to the cities, we do have our, uh, mediation. With, uh, regarding the, the tennis courts that you guys are well aware of, um, so we hope that that goes well and, uh, we'll keep you all up to date on how, how that goes, I think it's at nine AM, I don't know how long mediations last. I don't know, Deb, the last one that you went through, is that an all day event or? Okay, so. We might have an all day event.
It was dark when we got here, so.
Okay.
I do remember that.
That's great fun to hear. You know, we're, we're moving forward with our continuous improvement plan, doing lots of work in curriculum design, really trying to get our, um, curriculum mapping started. And, uh, and getting some traction on that and, uh, we had a really great, um, uh, teaching, learning or student learning leadership team this evening and, and, uh, we're getting some movement forward. So because we have so many presenters this evening that we're gonna learn a lot from, I'm gonna cut my remarks there unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Ben?
The terms of township, seven?
I think it's at seven thirty. I'm gonna try and get.
Maybe not.
Motion to approve the agenda. So, second motion by Eric Manks, second by Jim, starting discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, agenda approved. We have motion to approve the previous board meeting minutes. Motion made by Deb, second by Sue, starting discussion. None, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, meetings are approved. We have motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made by Eric Manks, second by Chad, starting discussion.
I just wanted to, um, find out if you drove in the treasurer's report, um, there was an additional piece with, um, investment details, so we talked about policy. And so if you had a chance to look at that, if you're interested in that, there was a, they put in a really nice breakdown, so thank Michelle for that.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the consent agenda is approved. Moving on to the information portion, primary school update.
I'm gonna start by sharing my screen. Can everybody hear me okay, cause I muted mine, so if you want to get the feedback, that's online.
Yes.
All right, so I know there were jokes about how long Sarah talks.
They weren't jokes.
I love you guys. I promise I will keep it brief, I will set my timer right now. But all joking aside, it's honestly just because I love what I do and I'm so proud of our students and proud of our staff and so it's exciting to talk about it. All right, can everyone, there we go, look at that. Okay. Gonna minimize everybody here, all right, so everything that we do really connects back to, um, our conversations and collaboration at district level with the continuous improvement. Underneath the student learning team, the climate and culture team, the MTSS team, and then the operational day to day function pieces. And the power is in the action steps, so I appreciate how we're all connected from site to district level with still the flexibility to meet each of the different building needs. I won't go through this link right here, but for those that are interested, there's a detailed, um, link there of what all of those different action steps. And there's some pretty, pretty great ones in there, I'll just kind of.
Can you, can you open that up, I think they need to see that because.
All right, I would like to make, just kidding.
Let the minute show that it's my fault. But, but this is where things are connected, where every, every site has a mere leadership team and every leadership team for that big rock area has an action plan. With a detailed strategies that they'll use at that level.
Absolutely, and I'll go through and share some of the highlights from each of the different leadership teams. This gives more of a comprehensive look and then you'll notice underneath each of them, you'll have a link here that talks about our specific structure and agenda. Because we even ask for all of our leadership teams plus department meetings, I'm on the student management team, there's a special ed department. They all come up with their norms of behavior and, um, uh, process of how to make decisions. And, uh, running agendas, key roles, um, and such, just to help make sure that our, uh, meetings are as efficient as possible. And by meeting all of the different needs and so on, each of these different leadership teams, what's really important, uh, to me and to all of the sites. Is that we have all of the voices heard, so each of the PLCs, because every teacher is on a PLC. Um, every PLC is represented then to be that person that goes back between site level leadership and their PLCs and our grade levels. So that's kind of that chain of communication and then we also have other groups represented, uh, for example, like on our climate and culture, the peer professional team. And, and so on, because we want everyone, everyone's an important part of that team to be represented. But the analogy that I use with it, and I love this analogy, is I view student success as a puzzle. There's many, many pieces to a puzzle and every single piece is important. Pieces are teachers, bus drivers, food service, parents, board, principals, and if one of those pieces is missing, students can't be as successful. So just trying to really honor that by having that open feedback and chain of communication. And so a big piece of what we do is, is teaching and learning, uh, with that student learning team, this is the Princeton paradigm, we're gonna continue to have a focus on, um, how we teach students, everything goes back to the standards, curriculum is resources that we use, but the standards are what drive us. And building those relationships with students that, we've said that especially that that's important to any year. But I would even argue that it's even more important over the last year and a half with the multiple learning models and, um, partnering with families as well. In that relationship piece, all of which is part of that Princeton paradigm. I share this every time and I share it as much as I can, because I'm really, really proud of this, when you walk into the primary school, you're going to see this visual on the side of the wall. And yes, it looks nice, but the reason why we're so proud of it is that this is our why. Several years ago, we got together and said, what, what is our why? And we came up with a primary school vision statement similar to how the district has a mission statement and that was a collaborative effort with teachers, paras, food service. The whole team and the words that you're gonna notice in this tiger paw that are the largest are the words that came up the most in that conversation. Students, potential, positive, safe, all of those different pieces. And we know that it's important to teach students academics and also the socially emotional learning. So we wanna help foster that love of learning in all of those different areas. And then to complement that, we came up with these collective commitments that help support how we accomplish our vision statement. So whenever we give tours and those sorts of things, I always like to stop and share that with our families because of that why behind it. Um, today is a good day, this just really represents that we just have that growth mindset, giving our best efforts, this is just a bulletin board that we put together. To help keep that at our center point, mistakes is how we learn, we like to make mistakes, we learn from them, that's how we continue to grow. Um, enrollment, um, a little update on where our, our enrollment is at, I don't know, everyone. Um, there's, there was a lot of, um, really hard work and intentional effort to tell our story. I believe that Princeton is the best place to be, um, we moved here a couple of years ago, but prior to that, I opened enroll my own student, my own kids. Into the district because I believe that we have the best. And so when you can share your story and show it in lots of different ways, I believe that the enrollment can kind of come with that. You know, kindergarten, we're super excited because we are over what our projected enrollment was for kindergarten by a fair amount. So that's, that's just sharing your story and the enrollment is kind of the, the icing on the cake, if you would, but it's just letting people believe in your why or sharing your why.
Just as a point of information, we had set our budget, um, number for kindergarten at 200 students and when we got into early August or, or more July. We thought, boy, we need to bring that down and we brought it down to 190 because we, but then, and this has happened the last couple of years. Which is different, it didn't used to happen this way, but we're get, we get a huge number of enroll, enrollments late into August. And, and we welcome that, we're excited about that, but it definitely causes some challenges for us on the staffing side of things. Because when we get to more students and we need to make sure we hire additional staff members.
What's challenging too is that some of those came in September, once we're, we're here in Rhye, so that, it's, it's always, it's challenging. It's a good problem to have, but it does create some logistical pieces, um, on, on several different levels there. I'm super proud of, I'm super proud that, um, after kind of sharing our story and doing those things, that people are excited and wanting to come. And then I'm thinking that maybe part of the reason why we're seeing this more over the last couple of years, that later enrollment is, it maybe perhaps speaks to the times that we're in. For families, because there's some decisions to be made with the pandemic and such. Uh, we love pictures because it gets to see our kids. So we're just really excited because here's a picture of our kids in the lunchroom, we're eating lunch in the lunchroom, we are taking extra proactive steps this year. For example, we have, this is Ms. Halbeck's class, uh, they're sitting all together so that they're in that same cohort of students. Just to kind of do some things that are proactive and preventative to help keep everyone to take those extra steps. And we were excited to bring back our fire, um, our fire chief, Chief Ron, to partner with us for fire prevention week. And this was the smokehouse, I participated in the smokehouse and it is an experience for everybody. I was taking notes on my own of things I need to go home with my own family to do, but it was really fun because we could get that for, um, the plan is for every second graders enough each year. So it was nice to do some of those things that we didn't have a chance to do last year. When we focus more on our student learning team, uh, some of those highlights, each year, each site needs to make goals for, uh, how they, as far as reading and math. And those are our goals for this year, but again, the, the, the real, um, important part is having a robust action plan. And we have a very robust student learning team action plan, um, at the, at the primary school, I kind of dived into it. Here is our data from the last couple of years. Um, in the spring, because that's when we first went into distance learning, we didn't have that data and that was, um, done, I think, pretty much statewide even if I'm not mistaken. Because that's when we have that executive order in place, the one thing to kind of point out and I'm gonna share maybe some reasons on why, but. Super happy to see that from spring to fall here, we didn't have, um, a dip. Cause you can probably assume that there might be one because it's three months without that direct instruction. And same for reading with the spring, there wasn't so much a dip from the spring to the fall. And so there's probably several reasons for that, um, some of them would be that this summer, when we were looking at summer targeted services. Or Tiger Academy, so summer school, we were very intentional with our data and looking at where do we want to target. And a big piece of that was some of the work that was done last year amongst planning for multiple learning models and those things. We had done a lot of collaboration as a whole K two team about the idea of, um, of what we want for our students by the time they need second grade. And one of the things was to really focus in on ELA and Spanish language arts, English language arts and Spanish language arts. And we focused a lot on the essentials last year and now continuing this year, but with Tiger Academy, um, we grouped students by skills. Not necessarily by grade, so if I was a second grader and this was K five and Jessica was instrumental in this and did a really nice job, um, as well. But we base kids on, we did diagnostics on what skill do they need specifically around ELA, because that's where our focus has been. And then group them by that. And then the second piece, because you can only offer Tiger Academy to so many students, is we wanted to put together resources knowing, anticipating. That education is gonna look different this year because of the multiple reasons from last year. So this is something that, um, we're super proud of, we put it together for kindergarten, first grade, second grade. Spanish immersion and for social emotional learning, what we did was we took our essentials of the essentials. And created at home learning resources that we pushed out to all families, um, through the office and through teachers at the end of the year. And, and then when kids left, teachers said, oh, Sarah, you're in my class, um, you could maybe work a little bit on number sense. Here's some activities for you to do and it came in this format. So I think I, I appreciate kind of that intentional thinking proactively to this year over the summer. And so we are going deep with the focus on the big five, um, around ELA and Spanish language arts. For math, some of those essentials are your number talks and then that social emotional learning piece is super important. Because that's that relationship building with students and we have some of those tier one pieces with different curriculums and resources. And we really, really dived in, this is exciting, to what we call the science of reading, this is the how do we teach reading. And there was a lot of collaboration K two last year in, um, what this means when we talk about how to teach reading. And we gave a survey at the end of the year and one of the questions on the survey was this piece right here at the very bottom. Is getting feedback on the idea of having 90% of decoders by the end of first grade and are you ready? Hundred percent said yes, that is what we want to focus in. That is incredible when we think of a hundred percent of our staff are craving and wanting that, so this year we have, um, we're doing some sound walls training, sound walls training is the phonemic awareness piece, like how sound, how letters make sounds. It has nothing to do with print, it's just how something sounds. And so all of our teachers and interventionists just got done with that training actually. And we are also doing some letters training, which complements the science of reading as well. Um, we're starting with that on a volunteer basis, so we have, um, some primary school teachers, some early childhood and intermediate teachers doing that and that's a year long training. And, uh, we noticed that there was a need for that direct explicit resource for phonemic awareness, we implemented that a couple of years ago. We also noticed that need for phonics, so we are piloting two different phonics programs, KT. So super proud of our staff, um, for diving into those things so that we can make a decision of which one for next year. Can we go faster, this, again, it's just a picture of kids doing things that we couldn't necessarily all do together last year. So I have to say that I did try to go as fast as I can and you see these little bodies and they get up and get some air, they almost knocked me over, true story, should have had a baby on, it was kind of fun. Some of our climate and culture action steps, really it goes back to again, that SEL component. Um, we last year or two years ago, we did a reboot with PDIS and Tiger Pride and we collectively as a K two group. Talked about what behaviors are classroom managed, what are reset room and what are office managed? And so we're implementing and doing training on all of those things these last couple of months as well. So we're just kind of unpausing, if you would, from last year and really trying to show how things are connected with our MTSS. Climate culture and our student management team, our student management team, we started meeting, we've met so many times already, just to be super intentional. With data and how we can offer supports to the classroom level, um, it's been, it's been pretty, pretty good with, with some of those things. Because we wanna ultimately, we wanna help support our students and staff. And then our MTSS, um, three-legged stool, the three-legged stool is something that we just want to, to kind of embed to be common language. Really the gist of the three-legged stool is how we can take something that can be overwhelming and complex when doing interventions and make it in a user friendly way. And so we've been doing some training on that three-legged stool, which is essentially. The, how do you teach replacement behaviors or academics, how are we gonna progress monitor and how are we gonna reinforce and recognize? There's more to it, but that's kind of the, the gist of it, with really data, data guides everything that we do. And then this part, um, whoops, correct one, where am I at a time? All right. But this is us kind of telling our story, okay? This is last year, or a couple of years ago, we partnered with CEEL to do some videos to help tell our story. Last year, we continued it on our own at primary level, um, we wanted to help share was twofold, we wanted to help share our story. For kindergarten and such, but we also wanted to help prepare. Future kindergarten families and kindergarten students for when they come in. And so what we did is we have, uh, series, this was, it was pretty cool, we have a series of, um, videos and brochures. That we put together and we released one starting every month in March. So series one was March, two is in April and so on, and then in the series four is when we, um, put together three months in one, if you would, but essentially just to show you an example of what it looks like. For the first three months, we created a top 10 skills, okay, so what are some things that families can do at their home for kindergarten readiness? And we paired it with our kindergarten safari theme. And the cover page looks pretty similar on each of the different series, but with different information to kind of help promote. And we divided it up into readiness levels, academic skills and our favorite Tiger Pride. So once a month, that got pushed out like through the Facebook page and to all, like early childhood, just to help support families as they come into kindergarten. And then what we did in, um, in the last one is we had three months of activities. All together that we pushed out in June, so we took a calendar and said, here are some things that help promote all of those different skills. For different days of the week, things that are simple, fun and engaging. And then in that, because we wanted to reach as many people as we could, some people might prefer this type of a format, some might for, prefer a video, we have a video that complements. Each one, I might like to play a little bit of one, each video then complimented the month. And this is an example of kind of how they, how they turned out, hope to share that story.
We are filed about kindergarten, welcome to our kindergarten adventures, part two, last month, we shared a list of top 10 tiger cut skills that help prepare for our future kindergarten students. These are skills that can be practiced now and all set along, they are located on our district website anytime you may want to. Each of these skills help develop kindergarten readiness skills, academic skills and our favorite, Tiger Pride skill, let's explore it together. Our first skill is responsible briefly to praise, limits and corrections, accepting the word no. When telling a child no, they have choice from today. We can teach children how they can ask nicely for something different or have it another time, calmly say how they feel or draw a picture of their feelings. Our second skill is demonstrate the ability to repeat tasks. To get started, begin with one or two step directions, for example, first finish coloring, then we will practice spelling under white orders. Our third skill is practice opening different snacks. In kindergarten, we have adults who will help help students to practice their independence by opening up containers, ziploc bags, cheese, milk containers and more. Our fourth skill is using the bathroom appropriately and washing their hands. We wash our hands many times at school, we teach students to wash their hands for 20 seconds. A fun way to do this at home while still learning is by counting each one or seeking our ABCs. Our fifth skill is recognize those letters in your name and your name and print. Practice writing your child's name at that, happen when you keep the letters two, then when writing, they can be the letters to do. Our sixth skill is can recognize.
Okay, you can kind of get the idea of it, I need to go back to mute, um, but it just complements each of those. Different ones, so those were fun to do and, uh, we gave a survey to all of our families last spring. And there were lots of different questions on there and one of the feedback or one of the questions was. Would you recommend the primary school to another family that you know or a friend and 97%? would you recommend the primary school to another family that you know or a friend? And ninety-seven percent said, yes, they would. And I think that's really something to celebrate, because that's, that's whenever you think of like systems thinking, anything above eighty percent is a thumbs up. So a thumbs up on that one. And that's really, honestly, it's because of the teachers and the staff that we have there. They're the ones that help share that every day and build those relationships with families. I just get to work with them. So there are the magic that happens. And here are our little tiger cubs. Don't they look ferocious on home? They're so cute. I just love them. Thank you. Any questions?
You got a question for Sarah?
Just great job.
Thank you.
John Ward?
For visit primary school, just let me know. You're welcome at any.
I was a reading buddy a couple of years ago. I really enjoyed that.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
Right now, it was fun.
We're both Michelle.
Yep. She's good stuff. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Intermediate school.
I think John might be with us virtually. Did I see him someplace on the screen? John, are you with us? I would say if no, let's jump, let's jump to Barb.
Now, do I have to share the screen, right?
You know, share your, share your Zoom, or if you're logged into.
Hey, John? Just, so, funny start. I'm not sure if you can hear me at all. I'm with my mom at assistant living and there's like a fire alarm or something going off. So like, I don't know if you can hear me at all.
Yeah, we can hear you, John. Would you like Barb to go first?
Yeah, let's do that.
Absolutely.
This worked out good for you, Barb. Now you can go home.
Okay. I feel like I want to stand here, but I have to share a screen. Somehow this always goes backwards on me. Just one second, please bear with me. Starting from the beginning, presenting. Is this all right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, thank you for having us. It's Positive Tea Tuesday. I can't remember two things for the day, so I'm dressed for positive tea, but maybe not for presenting to the board. This is just a photo of some of our new signage that we have around the school. Am I showing my, how do I minimize that, Sarah? Is that helpful? I'm just seeing on the screen, is that mine? Is that me? Okay, that's not me.
All right. I think you're just gonna have to live with that little square.
I thought it was me. I think I was saying, this is a little bit of letting you know what some of our new signage is. We're, we're always using our brand. We get our signage from Menman Downtown, and I can call and he gets it to us quickly. And students are asking for some more of that right now, which is really kind of fun. They're involved in the, in our signage and branding. So I wanted to share some of that. Why isn't it there? This is something I'm doing this year. I dedicated our first week of school, because it's Labor Day, to someone and dedicating this presentation to Dana Scannanato and Greta Schimming. They are in the front office. They are the voice of the tiger at the high school. Ben likes to, he's taught us to have good customer service. These two display that daily, all day long. This is a report of last year. You can imagine the phone calls that they took and the customers, our clients that they helped. They are a voice for us, and I appreciate their work very much. This is the student theme from last year. We're all in this together. I don't influence that. They, the students create that. I give them some guidelines and that this is what they chose. And of course, it's a familiar thing to you. And I think you know what it's about. And we looked for multiple ways throughout the year to demonstrate that and to make that and to manifest the, the student theme. These are a couple of our student leaders involved in that, in the creation of that theme. Just a little aside, I have what's called a student cabinet. We have lots of leadership teams and opportunities for students to be involved. We started the student cabinet last year, our meetings. We try to meet at least once a trimester. We did, there are some things that we had to abandon, and that was one of them. Just so you know what student life was like last year, we literally could not find times to get those students together with me virtually or in person. So we, we set it aside and we're getting close to our first student cabinet meeting soon. This is our operations team. As you've heard from Sarah and others, we have the four, what we call we rocks, our ops team, which certainly fun beyond. Cause you know, you say ops team, anyway. This is who we are. We also had three team members that are listed here that served on our COVID ad hoc team. And, you know, I have memories of sitting on a Friday afternoon at the lake. We're supposed to be at a wedding or wherever we all are. And we were working in July. I'm sure all of you remember the work that we had to do. And these people all helped with that. And they received no extra pay for that. And it just was really an amazing thing. We also have our high school action plan. I just want to point out that ours doesn't look like the primaries. Primaries looks like ours, just saying. Nobody, nobody can say that funny, etc. So you can link on this.
It is true. When you see a good format, you adopt it.
It's an inside Joe Park storm, but we will.
We all have our gifts in our calendar. I go to Barb for forms and procedures.
Yeah, what is that I tell you? That's not, that's not a good thing. You also have seen the district plan. I did not link that COVID plan because that can lead you into some other documents that are not public. And here's our news and notes. This is what we rely on currently. I linked this year's. It's a little easier to see. As Sarah showed, and John will show, and others will show you, we have come to rely on so many linked documents. This is accessible to our teachers at the high school at any time. And we organized it through our big rock. So here's our operations documents right at the top. All these links relate to operations. Here's the student learning link. Here's our student learning structure. And here's things from the district. Here's the paradigm. And here's our learning map. So we've started to really organize ourselves in this manner. Our staff meetings are set up and organized in this same or structure as well. We start with operations, then we go to student learning. And we end with climate and culture for learning, a lot of order here, and then tiger triumphs and celebrations. So this structure, excuse me, does guide us a great deal. So that is a lot of time on this first slide, and it won't all go like that. The photo is in music in our choir class, in case you are not recognizing that classroom. Here's the members of our student learning team from last year. Our PLC facilitators make up the student learning team at the high school. We call it SLT. Here is the plan from last year or part of it. One, two, and three on this slide are the district goals. Move toward guaranteed coherent viable curriculum. We have our math goal and our English language arts goal. Establish a team to recommend fair grading protocol. And you'll notice that this is highlighted. This was started last year, and we will, will continue that. We didn't get as far as we had hoped to during the year of COVID. But nothing completely stopped. And we, we continue to move forward. The next goal is deepen the understanding of Princeton paradigm, which is our instructional model. And we have our, we have C four I days. That's coaching for implementation. Those are our sort of in-depth training days, and those are coming up for us next week. And we will have two of them this fall. The first one is for our teacher coaches, which coaches are through ATPS model. And that is training specifically for them. And the follow-up training is for new teachers and their mentors. We have found this to be a successful format. And we are fostering literacy. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. So those are the district goals and we have our plan. So here's the student learning. Well, it's a little bit more visual. Easier to maybe see what we're working on. We focused on was called habits of mind. And this is a research model. There are so many ELA standards. There's a lot of research behind reading and literacy. So how can we make this more accessible to all the high school staff in all the different subject areas? It was becoming not as successful as we had hoped to just keep talking about, here are these standards that we're all supposed to implement. Here they are. Let's keep working on them. Let's keep working on them. We looked through what research was out there, Jessica, supported this work and helped us with this work. And this habits of mind is a card. And we now, everyone has that at the high school and we, that's a big part of our professional development, starting last year, and now we'll go more in depth. C four I days again, those are part of our culture here. We've been holding those, Sarah, how many years? What would you say? Seven?
Yeah.
Here's a quick look at our math and reading goals. You can see that we did not meet the, the math goal. We did meet the reading goal. We've been in the year of COVID, so I'll show you a little bit more about that. The math goal, we had forty-four point eight percent of the students who tested score in a proficient range last spring. You may recall that in 2020, there was not an MCA. So it's canceled that first year of COVID. So the forty-four point eight percent compares to sixty point three in 2019, two years previous to that. And this was our forty-four point eight percent. We're pretty proud. That is three point four percent above the Minnesota average. And it's four point eight percent above the district average. This is a cause for celebration. And a congratulations to our, to our math team and our students. Our reading MCA scores, we were sixty-four point five percent of the students that tested proficient, which was twelve and a half percent above Minnesota and eleven point four above the district. We were at sixty-one percent proficient in 2019. So we actually increased in this time. And that is, there's lots of reasons. It isn't just an accident for sure. There are lots of contributions to that. Just like when we don't meet a goal, there are lots of reasons for that. But it is purposeful work around English language art standards across the curriculum. We believe that has a significant influence on these results. We appreciate our students and parents who helped participate in this test and have those scores as high as they are. Science is not a goal area for a TTPS, but we always look at it. We are also proud of these results. And you can see that we were just a couple of points below where science was in 2019. Again, we were above the state average by almost ten percent in science. And we were almost thirteen percent above the district. This is our teachers in all these areas and all teachers pair us and students are to be congratulated on these results. It is real point of pride for us. There also are at the high school, we have AP courses, advanced placement, and CIS courses, college and the schools. And I thought I would share some AP results with you because I typically do. There are eight tests that students took at the high school. There are more than eight available, but this is what our students participated in. Now, we really like the Spanish results, but it is not a large end, meaning not a lot of students took the test. But how awesome is that? In calculus, you can see where we are. Calculus tends to go up and down. Something Mr. Murphy has noted over the years. But look at these results as well. This is a percentage of students who scored three or higher on the AP exam in that area. That's the, that's the data that is used and shared is score of three or higher. Three or higher typically results in a college awarding credit. It doesn't always. It varies by subject. It varies by institution. We have recognized students at the pet fest on homecoming. There were, oops, I'm getting ahead of myself. I'll get, I'll just go there. So we had nine students that took AP tests last spring who earned AP scholar designation. You can see that that means three or higher on three or more exams in one year. We have three students identified or named as scholar, AP scholar with honors, which you can see the definition, that's at least three point two five on all their exams taken. Score of three or higher on four or more of these exams. So they had to have taken at least four AP exams. So that's AP with scholars. We have twenty-six AP scholars, nine of them last year. We had six AP scholars with honors, three of them last year in the year of COVID. We had two students last year that were, that earned AP scholar with distinction honors. And we've had five total since we began tracking this data. And we had a tiger first, two students that were ninth grade last year that scored a five on their first AP exam. Did that, did that make sense? So they took the AP exam for the first time last year as a ninth grader and scored a five, which is the highest score attainable. It was just delightful to do shout-outs. And this was the Bravo moment. And it was fun to celebrate that along with at the pet fest. Was that just last week?
Oh, I think that's pretty special. I've been to a lot of pet fests in my life and, and you don't, this is the first place I've ever been where they're honoring academics at the pet fest.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
It was very fun. So next for our student learning, as, as we're moving forward into twenty-one, twenty-two, we still have our, our goals. We're working with the Atlas curriculum tracking. We're establishing some common grading protocols. That's still our work. And we have we've re-invented, not reinvented, we we're providing newer copies of our toolkit. So here's, here's the learning learning goals for the year. Here are the, here's the learning map. These tools that we've used over the years. Everybody's getting new pieces for that toolkit as we go throughout the year. So at each training that we do, we're reinventing that. So that is kind of a nice piece. Teachers like to get some of those new pieces. And you can see that we're also working on our graduation goals, college and career-ready goals, and our habits of mind, those four reading strategies that we are working on. That's a big focus for us. I did want to talk about Princeton Academy's four moments. If I could draw your attention to the top of this slide, you can see the six icons there. I've included what they represent. You can see the one on the left, the green, that's for the agriculture, the wheel, the career cluster wheel. So our academies at Princeton are formed around or modeled after the Minnesota career wheel. We have, so that means we have six. There's five businesses partnering with us already. We're, we will be piloting our first placement for a youth skills training opportunity in one hour more of our. In one hour more of our business partners. We have a college and career exploration course that we're. Connecting more meaningfully to our academies example. We, we've done mock interviews over the years, but now we're having mock interview week. They're on the calendar for trimester one and trimester two. We don't offer our class in trimester three because we have other college and career activities. So a business, for example, might say, I want to be involved in this academy piece. Well, we have mock interview week. Do you have anybody that could sign up for that? So it's just this one week. So we're not, we're not having to ask and find people over longer periods of time. It's very structured. We also have opportunities like, would you be a mentor? And we have specific mentoring activities at certain time periods. Would you like to host a youth skills training opportunity, sometimes known as an intern? Can't always call them interns. So we have the youth skills training. I'll just show you a real quick. Snapshot of academies. So here is, for example, the Business Academy. They're color-coded, we'll have, we're working on. Branding documents to be handing out. So in the Business Academy, I guess I put on my glasses on. You can see these four columns. So a student, and we spent a lot of time. Gathering information from partners, students, businesses, parents, teachers. And one of the main desires was that not every student should be required to be in an academy. That was strong in Princeton. So we are landing on, a student can graduate from an academy. Or a student can graduate with distinction. We haven't landed on exactly the right word yet. So if you're, if you completed the coursework and the concentration of courses within this. Wheel area. Then you can graduate back from that academy. If you complete a youth skills training on the job experience. You and taking, and there's a portfolio presentation. If you complete the higher level requirements, then you would graduate with distinction. Or whatever that language will end up being at graduation. And we will have some students graduating with an academy distinction this June. They will have, it will be like a medallion that will have Princeton academies. The medallions will be the same, the colors of the ribbon holding the medallions will be different. Representing the different academies, think of your colleges, universities have colleges. That's how that goes. We're doing a deep dive here. Actually, Jay Joseph is in the process of analyzing. What students do we have in the senior classes are already eligible or nearly eligible to graduate from the academy. Can I say one more thing about that? And I'll, I'll promise to go faster. Some of our next work over the next month is as we look towards next year, which is what we do in. In October, November, Sue will remember those procedures. Departments are looking at their courses with a course is a singleton. It has no prerequisite or no follow-up. Those courses will be removed, we'll, we'll make decisions around them. They have to fit, a course has to fit in an academy. And there has to be some sort of a pathway that goes, goes into. So one singleton course, like I would love to teach. How to declutter your basement storage closet in three steps. I can teach that, I'd love that, but that's the only course and it doesn't follow up anything. And it doesn't lead to anything. It's going to have to go. That's our work for the next little while here. Then our next area, and I'll start to move faster if you don't mind, is M T S S, multi-tiered system of supports. And you've seen our diamond multiple times. This team, you can see our members here, Larissa Bell and Ashley Magnuson are the leaders of this team. Sarah Dirk is kind of that admin team member here. I forgot to explain that. We have our operations team and our site team. We have a teacher leader and an admin leader on each of these big rock teams. So our M T S team, M T S S team is working on procedures and processes. We're developing interventions and problem-solving procedures. And the year of COVID. Actually gave us an opportunity to try some things that we've continued. But also give a try to some things that we have abandoned. We had something called Tiger Academies that did not work for us. That was helpful to, to be able to try out and abandon that, knowing that. You know, here's why it didn't work and here's why we couldn't get that research to play out in our system. The procedures and processes, we're developing common language that we practiced. We just had a perhoot the other day that almost all teachers. Scored at ninety-five percent or more at the beginning of last school year. Ninety-five percent of teachers would have probably scored in the sixty percent range. So we're increasing our common language. We've changed some communications. This year, we're digging into a process for evaluating and monitoring student grades. We have a different level or a different process for. Referring a student to the pit team, the problem-solving team that looks at individual students. We're digging into our tier two supports. We've added a lot of tier two support or we've added some significant steps. We have changed some language on our. Schedule, courses are called M T S S. So we have a ninth grade seminar. We have what used to be Sue, the past seminar. And we have R T I math, it's now M T S S math. So we're using this language support for our students. And I kind of said that, so I'm going to look to this. This shows you what we're doing next. We are really digging into the ninth grade experience and what can we do to formally support the ninth grade? We've already tried some things that we have some success with and we have done a lot of visiting. We're continuing our teams that review specific student needs. Our climate and culture for learning. It's not just climate and culture, it's for learning. That is an important addition to the name of this big rock. You can see this banner is again, part of our branding. You maybe remember we used to use fact as our P D I S acronym. Now it is roar, we're systematically teaching our students about roar. This is a new banner that just what has been put up for the school year. That's from our P D I S team. The P D I S team is part of climate and culture for learning. They've established the district or the school matrix. And that's, I thought I had right here. So they've been in a three-year redesign of the P D I S program. And have had, have sent a team to significant and in-depth training over the last two years. This is year three. See that we have those branding around the school. So we were working, we were going ahead, moving on. And then we, we went into hybrid and distance learning. You know how all that happened. COVID nineteen continued to happen in twenty and twenty-one. We implemented Schoology last year. Teachers went from one department using Schoology somewhat to every teacher. Putting their courses on this program called Schoology. They did that the week before school started. That became our focus of the back-to-school workshop week. It was miraculous and we had significant help from Patrick McMahon, the teacher coach at the high school. And Anne Amrin, who was our P O M coordinator at the time. He shifted to, we had went from hybrid learning to distance learning. We had mass required. We did the social distancing. It was an amazing feat at all of the buildings. Our attendance was really limited. We were short-staffed every day. I'm speaking for all of the schools, I'm sure. Events were canceled and rescheduled, but sometimes canceled again. Thirty-eight percent of our students were full-time distance learners in that trimester three. After we did come back, I just thought that was kind of interesting. That's exactly what we expected it to be and that's where, where it landed. If you ever have time, Tiger Triumphs. So we had COVID happen, but we also have so many other amazing things. This is a longstanding tradition at the high school. We actually have this out at graduation. It's just, just a never-ending list of all the achievements we could think of. It doesn't even include any of that, all of them, excuse me. And that is a real celebration for us. And here's the theme from twenty-one. Oh, yes, this is the students at Link Day, the first day of ninth grade this year, September seventh, I believe it was. Student-led mentors. And our student theme this year sees every opportunity. And you can see the banners in my, in the picture here. If you do come in the high school, if you look up, the banners now show the student themes for, I think, five years. And the new banner goes in the pride replaced and part of our branding. So that's what we're doing this year. I want to thank you. And there's a reason that we say, hope you have an amazing day. One of our most wonderful students says that to everyone she sees. So we now have T-shirts. Eric Jacobs had T-shirts made, they, hope you have an amazing day. Thank you all very much.
Any questions? She left off all the other fun stuff like having coordinating two graduations during the pandemic. Do you remember those days?
Yeah.
And a bunch of other stuff.
Thank you.
I still got scars, so does she probably.
All right, thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
Intermediate school update, move on to John.
Hey, yeah, hopefully this is going to work this time. So I'm, I appreciate your patience. So Tuesday nights, typically I'm hanging out with my mom, it's just a living. And first time ever we've had something like this happen where a fire alarm starts right when Sarah's done. So I think maybe Sarah had it set up or something, I'm not sure. Can you hear me okay though? All right, perfect. Yeah, it's tough to follow those two ladies. They are excellent in what they do. Going to share very similar type things and similar ideas as they have. But really everything result revolves around our continuous improvement plan and, and how we take that at the intermediate school. We have a very similar document. I'm a link type person as well. And so a very similar document that Barb has with, just within each of those big rocks, we have links for staff. It serves a couple of purposes. One, it's a great communication tool, having everything in one place. And also keeps in the forefront the work that we're doing. So having those things available. Enrollment, we saw, well, we have a rather large class in fourth grade. But in general, we have a pretty stable enrollment compared to where we were last year, as far as the fifth graders who left and third graders who came. So just slightly more students than in the fall of twenty twenty. It's separated by students who are in Spanish immersion versus students who are in those English sections. And we do have three, four combos in our third and fourth grade Spanish immersion program. And we have one fifth grade classroom as opposed to last year, we had two. So a little bit different instruction than what we've had in the past. But that's how we have it set out. We did add a halftime fourth grade person, as you're aware of, to help with those numbers. And they're focusing mostly on math instruction to help reduce the numbers during math. So we'll look at the data in a minute here, you'll see that we do have challenges that we're focusing in on. And, and COVID didn't help that with our, with our growth and our students. But we, but we have a plan to help move us. How that happened, I hit that really too fast. Okay. So priorities for us, this is really similar to last year. We really, like one thing the pandemic did teach us is how important it is to take care of ourselves so we can take care of others. And so really, so focusing on how do we make sure that we, my camera went off. How do we make sure that we are able to help our students? By being able to help ourselves first, so being able to realize. Doesn't mind of its own, hoping to realize that we can do more as we are, you know, taking care of ourselves. We want to be able to build and maintain those strong relationships. So much about our school has been for a long, long time. Just having those strong relationships between students and students, students and staff and staff and staff. And so how do we continue with those strong relationships? We've talked about the whole idea of. Sorry, now I have no light. The whole idea of having, turn my camera off, it's distracting here, sorry. There we go. I think that's going to be better if we go right from that. Okay. So being able to have the priority of what is the most important. So you've heard both Sarah and Barb talk about the essentials of the essentials. How do we make sure that we are focused in on what is truly important for our students? Making sure that we have them. Mastering that content so that we feel comfortable moving from grade to grade. We really are blessed with the work that Sarah is doing and the staff at the primary school in helping prepare the kids. We're so looking forward to the work that she's really been doing this year and last year, just to, to prepare those kids coming forward, even through this pandemic. And we want students to live in analysis, we're really focusing in for us is writing. We really want to spend time and, and, and helping our students become better writers to help them become better readers. And so we want to just be focusing on how are we able to make that happen with our students. Academic goals for us, we really want to see growth. We know our students are starting below where they typically would, but that's okay. We want to see them grow from fall to spring. And so for us, it's based on our star data and looking at how do we have a certain percentage of our students in both reading and math? Be, be, be growing to the part, to the, to the amounts they should be over that course of that year. I did share some of the testing results, just to give you an idea of where we are within each grade level, within math and reading. And so we see that we have, you know, forty-nine percent of our kids, for example, in third grade math. Were where we'd like them to be. And so we really want to be focusing in on looking at that data, looking at individual kids' data within. These, these concepts for them to, to grow over time. And so I shared these with you, just you have each one of them for you. You can see that we really want to spend time, obviously, with that essential content. Because we have students, you know, below where we'd like to see them. Forty percent in fourth grade math, for example. Twenty-eight percent in fifth grade math. So those are, those are. Data that is really concerning, but we want to be able to not get discouraged and move forward with where we, again, having the students grow. Reading, that thirty-seven percent, just, this is just a predictor of where we are going from fall to, fall to spring. On the M C As, thirty-one percent in fourth grade and forty-five percent in fifth grade. One thing that we really want to focus in on, having that positive environment. We feel that the environment is so critical, the conditions for learning for, for our students to be successful. So part of our entire pride, climate and culture group is all about having that. Positive environment. And so our goal is to, to foster a positive and safe environment, students are supported. And they strive to be successful, continue to grow emotionally and academically. We've been, you know, for, since two thousand and five, a, a Tiger Pride PBS school. And so we really take a lot of ownership and pride in making sure that our environments are the best that they can possibly be to help support our students. We'll continue to do that. Measurements that we use, we take what's called the servidale inventory. We do a self-assessment survey with our staff. We also want to hear from our stakeholders, families, students and staff to see how well we're doing. One thing we have noticed this year is that these students haven't had some of these normal experiences, like the playgrounds, the cafeteria. They haven't had those. We have only students in our school that have had that experience are fifth graders. None of the third or fourth graders have eaten in the cafeteria before this year or been on our playground. And so the whole idea of re-teaching those expectations, what we could consider a normal routine is not normal for them. It hasn't been normal for them. So how do we reteach those expectations of students so they can be? So how do we reteach those expectation of students so they can be successful in our different environments that we have over time? This was something that's really cool. So we have a, we have a theme this year. Our theme is Tiger Pride Worldwide, we really want to be focusing in on diversity and and being able to prefer, prepare students to build the work, play and live with people from all different kinds of backgrounds, whether they, you know, stay in Princeton or go somewhere out in the world. One of the things that we did early on was we asked families to give us some feedback on what is, what's the background of of you and your family and your child. And so we asked them questions like, you know, what languages are spoken at home? What's your favorite meal? What's your favorite activity as a family? What does Tiger Pride look like in your household? And then also, like, where are you from? You know, and some folks really went back in time in their family tree and some folks, you know, you can say, put Cambridge. So didn't go back really far, probably, but just to the discussions, that's our starting point. In in November, I'm sorry, in October, we had Gary Locke. So this last week, Gary Locke came and talked about the jibway culture and connecting that to his experiences. And so students can have that part of their, that part of a connection with the world. In November, not only will we be celebrating and honoring those veterans for Veterans Day, we'll also be looking at this Hispanic culture and folks from Mexico and that area and that region. And so we have, we'll be able to tap into our immersion program for that. So just being able to connect, you know, each month we'll have a different area of the world that we'll be connecting with. So just being able to to keep that focus, again, being able to have the connection with the the world, being able to connect with our self in a positive way, we really feel will help students are able, be able, able to learn effectively. Sarah mentioned this too, the social emotional learning. We really, really realized how important this is last year as we were, you know, doing different types of formats for learning, really being able to focus in and helps students understand their own feelings, be able to understand and be empathetic of others. Just really grounded us into what we really need to do as a school. And so we'll continue those this year. One thing that I'm really proud of is the work that we're doing with MTSS. So we have a really strong team, really working hard to help students access the support that they need. And that really begins with the teachers, knowing what systems are available to help support them. What interventions do we have? How do we get to a point where we have everybody getting the support that they need? And so that takes a super big group effort to make sure that we are doing everything we can to give the students what they need, where they're at. And so that's a, that's a thing that we take very seriously at the intermediate school. And then habits of a tiger, this is very foundational to what we're, what we're trying to do. The very bottom one there is one that really connects well with Tiger Pride Worldwide, just being empathetic citizens, connecting to the world around us. Just focus, a big focus for us, this this school year. I kind of whipped through that really fast. Do you have any comments? I'm gonna stop sharing my screen so I can get. Again. Let's try this. I got half my head there, kind of working, sorry about that. I really apologize for the technology problems. I was, I'm sitting on my car now because the, I'm worried about fire alarms and and fire folks. And anyway, it was, it's been all crazy, but I appreciate your, your patience with me. Any questions or comments that I can respond to?
Anyone have any questions? No, thank you, John, thanks for.
Hey, I appreciate your time, thank you.
All right, referendum update, anything?
Well, we're, I guess we only have two, two weeks to go. Today I was at senior dining, I thought that was a great experience. And I stayed, I think it was the last one there. So I was able to, after I shared some information with them, I ate and visited and met lots of new people and had good discussions about the referendum. I got a lot of history of the area and certainly they all wanted to bring me over to the pictures. And I could see their senior pictures and I could see their parents' senior pictures. Yeah, all the way back to the very first class, which I believe was in nineteen twenty-three. And some of them even had recollections of the one-room schoolhouse that was in town at one point in time. I don't think it's here anymore, but it was good stories. So that was good and and as I mentioned, I'm gonna, here, we're leaving shortly to the township meeting. And we have, I don't know what this, we'll have more meetings on Thursdays on planning and preparation. We'll continue on with dripping out lots more social media kinds of things, stuff on the internet. We have a couple more articles in the paper. Next week, we do have an open house, we're trying, you know, try and promote that, get as many people there as we can. And then we have a big Facebook Live that will be at eight P M next week that I'll do as well. And it's just really the last push. It's really, we just have to get people to come and vote. We have to get people to come and vote. And I just, I, I think the one stat that I just keep on telling you and and hoping people will listen is all the market research on referendum say that the lowest demographic for voter turnout are are parents of school-aged children. And I would tell you that parents of school-aged children are the ones that we hear from the most on the drastic needs we have in in our school district for facilities. And, you know, we went through a robust process to get to this point. We've listened, it's been an exercise in listening to lots of different people's perspective. And now it's, you know, now it's time for people to come vote. You know, that's the district and the board and I think we've, we've set the stage now for people to come vote. So I, I hope we get people to take the time.
Is there any questions for Ben?
And I am gonna be leaving.
Move on to the enrollment update.
As Sarah and Ben indicated, enrollment is better than we projected. This is end of September, this is actually our first run. We'll actually get another report that will may change these numbers slightly, but I don't anticipate a huge change. But we budgeted six forty-one at our primary school and we're at six fifty-three right now. Our intermediate school, we're at six ninety-six, we're at seven twenty-three. Middle school is six ninety-eight, we're at seven thirty-eight. Nine through twelve, and this is probably the most important number of all because if you start out lower with your high school, and typically we drop fifty to sixty kids. That's usually not a good spot to be in, so, and that happened to us a couple of years ago. Maybe it's three years ago now, but we estimated about a thousand fifteen kids, nine through twelve, all programs. And we're at one thousand fifty-six on our first run. So we're at thirty-one seventy, if you take sixty kids off of that, you're at thirty-one ten. And we had thirty-one hundred kids last year. We ended the school year with, so we will have flat enrollment year to year, it looks like. But we'll be up about fifty to sixty kids at our revised budget time unless something drastic happens to change that. So very good news, I like those numbers.
Any questions from Shaw and Holman?
Hey, I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button and clicked on a board book and I think all the next ones are mine.
Yes, they are.
It's telling us to go home. All right.
COVID nineteen funding update.
Okay. This is gonna be quick, I'm not going through all of them. I just wanted to let you know that if you look at the bottom, we're still working on the childcare base grants, so can't tell you where we are. But this was just released as of the finance meeting. We heard about the enrollment loss. We took the prize of all of our comparison districts on enrollment loss last year. And we actually projected that enrollment loss. So we're gonna get a good amount of money, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, but it's coming in as a grant. It's a federal grant, just like all the others, so there'll be rules to that, to those funds and we'll have to work through it. But I thought you'd be interested, now we're continuing to work through the S R three process. So there'll be more to come on that as we go through revised budget. This is of interest, health insurance bids, I'm just gonna keep going.
It's all you for a couple more minutes here.
Yep, so health insurance bids, typically we get about six bids from insurance companies. This year we got three. Sourcewell, who we currently have, and that's their carriers, Health Partners, Blue Cross, Blue Shield and Pete. I put all the numbers there, but in a nutshell, Pete was a thirty-seven percent increase overall from our current rates. Blue Cross, Blue Shield was twenty-nine percent and Sourcewell was twelve percent. So we are recommending going with Sourcewell.
And that's who we currently have.
That is who we currently have and they were the only ones that also gave us a rate cap for the second year. So that brings us to action.
Is there any questions on the health insurance bids or COVID funding update?
The health insurance bids, like all the bargaining units, they are all part of it, yes.
Yep, and so they're all on board with this. They all are part of that, yes.
All right, is there any more questions? All right, let's move on to the action. We have a motion to accept the health insurance bids from, who was it? Sourcewell?
I'm Sourcewell.
Sourcewell, right. Motion by Jim, seconded by Chad. Is there any discussion? Own favor? Opposed? The health and transport are approved. But we have a motion to accept the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two board goals as presented. Motion made by Eric Manx, we have a second. We have a second by Sue, is there any discussion?
Well, does anyone else think that C, one C should say, continue to work collaboratively as a board within agreed upon norms? Shouldn't the word be norms, they're not goals?
Oh, I think that is what's meant, yeah.
Even that, I don't know, that doesn't make.
Well.
It would make more sense with norms.
Continue to work collaboratively as a board within agreed upon norms.
Because it's your norms that we run within the meeting.
I, I don't know, that's the only thing that stuck out to me, it's like, I'm not sure what goals would mean there, but.
I'm already changing that to norms, everyone?
Yeah.
You probably. All right, so we have to make an amendment to the motion to change the, that was one C, right?
Yep.
One C to continue to work collaborative, collaboratively as a board within agreed upon norms. We have a motion for that amendment.
Make the motion to. Motion for chicken at last word to norms.
To norms. Okay, so we have a motion for the amendment from Chad, do we have a second for the amendment?
Second.
Second by Sue. Is there any discussion on that? Own favor? Opposed? It's approved. Our second reading of policy, we have a motion to accept the second reading of policy as presented.
Get the board on first.
I'm sorry. All right, do we have a motion to accept the board goals now? Right, that's what we have to hold on?
We had, yeah, we had the.
Now we have to vote on the goals.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to accept the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two board goals? Motion by Deb, do we have a second? Second, seconded by Jim, is there any discussion? None all in favor? Opposed? Board goals are now officially approved. Second reading of policy, do we have a motion to accept the second reading of policy? Motion made by Sue, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Don, is there any discussion? Are none all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Policy is approved. Notice of testing of optical scan voting system. We have a motion to accept the notice of testing of optical scan voting system on October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one as presented. So, motion made by Jim, do we have a second? Seconded by Chad, is there any discussion? Are none all in favor? Opposed? It is approved, notice of locations where ballots will be counted. I moved it, or do we have a motion to accept the notice of locations where ballots will be counted for the November second, two thousand twenty-one special election as presented?
So moved.
Motion made by Deb, do we have a second? Seconded by Sue, is there any discussion? Are none all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is approved, the computer like just froze. Come back. There's no additions to the agenda. Future meetings you see are listed below. We got a can, a vote canvassing on November eighth. So we have a motion to close the board meeting to discuss evaluation strategies. Motion made by Don, do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Deb, all in favor? All right, the meeting is now closed.